All right, I'm gonna introduce the meeting and get us started while the last few folks join. So, good morning, everybody. It's Thursday, April 6th, and we are meeting as a committee of the whole this morning. We are here to take up one item, which is 129-23, a discussion on the percentage growth rate to fully fund the pension trust and the impact on the city budget. Councilors Albright, Lipoff, Grossman, and Markowitz requesting a meeting with the City Council's Committee of the Whole to discuss our study with committee member Chris Bresky of the Newton Retirement Board's plan that increases funding to the pension trust annually by 9.6%. Its request for cost of living adjustment increases and its impact on our city and school services annually until full funding is achieved. At the beginning of the meeting, I am joined by, and I'm not going to do this by order of word, I'm just going to go straight down the list, councilors Downs, President Albright, councilors Crossley, Vice President Lipoff, councilors Bowman, Dan Berg, Gentile, Humphrey, Crispin, Larry, Maliki, Markowitz, Noel, Ryan, Wright, Kayla, Oliver, and Lucas. May I have a motion to promote Chris Bresky to a panelist to join us?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Vice President Lipoff. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Okay, Ms. Flynn, could you promote Mr. Bresky, please?
Yes, just in. Cassidy, that was Cassidy, that was Councilor Baker. Look for him. He's gonna use the General Link, and so you can promote him when he gets there.
Okay, will do.
Okay. President Albright, I am going to turn it over to you to introduce the item. School committee member Bresky has also been promoted and is now in the meeting and has joined us. If you could begin, please.
Okay, so I thought I would start and give you a five-minute overview of how we got to where we are right now, just so you have the same picture that we have as a small group. So during a budget review last
President.
Yes, yes.
Let me just ask one quick question. Do we have a hard stop of nine, or are we gonna hang in as long as we think we need to?
Counselor Grossman, what would you like to do?
So, I think we want to, of course, be respectful of the fact that people need to go to work and about their days. I'm expecting that 55 minutes is gonna be pretty tight and that some folks are gonna want to keep talking after that. So I can hang around until 9:30 to 9:45. I think we should aim to be as concise as possible. You know, I certainly don't want to cut anybody off or curtail anybody from speaking. This is purely given the unusual nature of this hour in our meetings and the fact that people need to go about their days. And I just ask everybody to try to be concise. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay, President Albright.
Okay, thanks. I'll just give this five-minute overview. So during our budget review last year, I phoned Chris Bresky to discuss something about the school's budget with him. During that conversation, the subject of the pension trust came up. Many of us on the council have often wondered how on earth we were going to be able to devote this growing compounding percent of our revenue annually and still do everything else we need to do for our residents. I guess I mentioned this concern to Chris, who said that he had just learned about the growing pension trust during one of our joint city council school committee meetings and would like to study the matter. We decided during that phone call that we would study the matter together. I talked to Councilors Grossman and Vice President Lipoff to tell him of my conversation with Mr. Bresky. We decided to study the pension funding as a small group. We knew a change was not in our hands, but before we could talk to the council, the mayor, or the retirement board, we would have to understand the details. We agreed to meet with Chris and we asked Tony Legalbo from the retirement board if he was willing to participate to make sure we understood the rules of the road with respect to pension funding. We met last May. Our school committee, Bresky, offered to create a spreadsheet for our study using the Siegel Actuarial Report from January 1st, 2022. We met twice more in June and October. Mr. Bresky's work showed that if the rate of growth of the pension allocation could be reduced from 9.6% to a smaller percent, the city would have funds available which could be used for school and city services while full funding could still be achieved after 9/2030, but well before the 2040 depending on the growth rate. You have the slide deck that represents these spreadsheets. We learned from Mr. Legalbo that the retirement board has total control of the percent and especially the end date for full funding. While state law requires full funding by 2040, our retirement board wants a date well before to accommodate the ups and downs in the economy. We were extremely impressed by the impact of reducing the rate of growth and asked to meet with the mayor, which we did in November. Councilor Markowitz joined that meeting as Mr. Bresky could not. The mayor requested, as she was planning an override, that we would meet again and talk after the vote. We met once more in February when the mayor assured us that she was interested in studying this matter. Mr. Legalbo always cautioned us that the retirement board, whose sole responsibility is to act in fiduciary manner towards our retirees, would probably not be interested in changing a percentage. The retirement board hires an actuary who provides data and takes into account the numbers of people who are actively working, inactive retired beneficiaries, tracks current salaries of employees as that has an impact on pensions, provides appropriate assumptions on longevity, and helps to determine the expected rate of return on the trust. I'm sure I've oversimplified that work, but that gives you broad strokes of what the actuary does. After the failed override, we asked to meet with the mayor. I found out that the mayor had already requested to be on the retirement board agenda for the meeting on March 28th, the following week. She was working on a plan that would let us know what the plan was before the meeting. Not knowing what the mayor's plan was, our study group decided to also ask to be on the retirement board agenda to provide our work to them. The timeline rushed our work as we had no time to inform the council before we talked to the retirement board. We did not have a specific plan to recommend. We just wanted to show them the impact of reducing the 9.6% plan and make sure all understood that we could still meet our funding deadline with a lower rate of growth. Our original plan had been to study this with the mayor and the council, but the mayor's visit to the retirement board with a plan unknown to us at that time changed all that quickly. Mr. Lopez did honor the request to be put on the agenda. The mayor explained her plan on the afternoon of March 27th, and we all learned about it the next day by email. We also learned the mayor planned to offer a change in COLA. We learned that Newton COLA offers COLA on the first $12,000 of pension, which is the minimum. State law allows retirement boards to pay COLA up to the first $18,000 of the pension. Newton is now only one of six communities at the $12,000 level. We learned that any change in COLA must be approved by the council. Change in COLA is very important to the retirement board. They have twice docketed a change to the minimum, and the council turned them down twice. The second time was in 2018, and Counselor Gentile had sent us all the report, the May 2018 report, and the negative, ultimate negative vote. At the March 28th retirement board meeting, the mayor presented a request to the board to reduce the pension by, I believe, I think it's a million dollars annually in order to bond the Horace Mann project and offered to increase COLA over three subsequent years up to $15,000. This doesn't, this ask didn't go as far as our data suggests we could to attain a sustainable budget. I read a statement to what you have in the Friday packet explaining what we learned from our study and asking for an open mind as they consider a possible change in the annual rate of growth. We specifically noted that current residents are paying for the failures of past administrations. In the face of a failed override, we are now also asking our residents to deal with cuts in our schools. Our plan to reduce the rate of growth would share the burden more equitably between current and future residents. Members of the board specifically asked me how I felt about COLA. I told them I'm only one of 24, but that if I were to vote to approve additional COLA, I would ask to reduce the rate of growth to attain a sustainable budget by freeing up substantial funds over the next seven to 10 years for city and school services. According to the data you're about to see, funds equal to or exceeding the override request could be available, which would pay for much more than COLA. As you all may know, the retirement board is meeting again at 1 this afternoon with their actuary, who has studied the mayor's plan and perhaps other plans, we don't know. I have no idea if they plan to vote on a change this afternoon or not. I tell you about that meeting by way of explaining why we wanted to meet with you this morning, so that the council would be as informed as we have become, albeit not perfectly informed, as we don't have all the actuarial data. And so, Counselor Grossman, this might be the time we could ask school committee Bresky to explain his data.
Yes, indeed, and I'm gonna refer to you as Mr. Bresky instead of school committee member Bresky for the rest of the meeting to save myself some syllables, if that's okay. So, Mr. Bresky, if you could take the floor from here, please.
Thank you, Counselor Grossman. Thank you, everyone, for being here on a, you know, workday morning to discuss this. I think this is an important matter. I want to thank President Albright for inviting me. And I specifically want to thank as well councilors Grossman, Lipoff, Albright, and Markowitz, who have worked with me over the last, gosh, it's been almost a year now, on addressing this, on addressing this issue. And Counselor Grossman, to your point of Mr. Bresky, I'm gonna have to refer to Councilors Grossman, Lipoff, Albright, Markowitz quite often during this presentation. So, for brevity, I'm gonna just refer to you as Councilors Glam. Grossman, Lipoff, Albright, Markowitz, if that's okay.
Love it.
I was gonna call you the Squad, but apparently that name was already taken. So we're, this is, we're here to discuss pension, and just for all the folks who, you know, are listening, it's a couple very brief things to discuss, just to set the stage. I want to differentiate pension from OPEB. Pension is a statutory obligation of the city. It's governed by mass state law. OPEB, or other post-retirement employee benefits, is a, you know, mostly consists of our retiree healthcare. And that is a contractual obligation of the city. It's our obligation to meet that contractual relationship with our current and former employees. The universe of pensioners in Newton consists largely of city employees with the exception of educators. So, those who are, you know, what we typically think of as our licensed accredited teachers, they're covered under the Mass State Teachers Program, whereas fire, police, public works, you know, some school administrators, paraprofessionals, custodians, et cetera, all fall under the city's plan. As as President Albright alluded to, the the Newton Retirement Board has pretty broad discretion according to the city's attorney in determining what the rate of funding of meeting that liability is. So I thought it would be helpful just to walk through the slides. I believe you all have the deck, and I'll share my screen here. And hopefully this will, hopefully this will work. Okay, does everyone, did that come up okay?
Yes.
Good. Great, thank you. All right, so this is, this is where this all started. As President Albright said, you know, during, during that joint school committee, city council meeting last year when we were discussing the budget, Maureen Le New was discussing this 9.6% rate of increase in our, in the, the rate of growth of how we fund the pension trust. And you know, knowing that the city grows at approximately 3.5% per year, you know, that immediately jumped out at me as that doesn't seem very sustainable for a line item as large as our pension. And so when you do the very simple math in, for year 22, the amount we funded our pension represented 8.8% of the city budget. When you compound that rate of growth at 9.6%, while the city's only growing at 3.5%, that will increase to 13.2% of the city budget for year 29. So that is going to represent effectively a 4.4% cut to city services. It's a, you can call it a crowding out, however you want to phrase that. And from my perspective, and I look at the strain we see in the schools and the strain we see in other parts of our city budget in terms of providing the services that the people of Newton expect, I don't know where 4.4% is gonna come from. So that was the problem. That's the issue we were trying to solve. If you look at cumulatively over the point of time from, from, for year 22 to the time that the, under, under the plan, the pensions fully funded, 28 cents of every dollar of growth of the city budget will go directly to pension funding. So I want to reiterate what what President Albright said, that, you know, we viewed this as the start of a discussion. This was not prescriptive. And, you know, we were just putting the math together of what is the potential range of scenarios. And I want to be very clear that there was never any debate that these obligations are not the city's moral and legal obligation to fulfill. And this is about, you know, I keep using the phrase, this is about the utility of a dollar today for city services versus the utility of investing that dollar to meet that multi-decade liability down the road. And so the types of shifts we're contemplating aren't about putting retirees at risk in any way, shape, or form. It's about shifting the burden from the current taxpayers of Newton, who are paying for the sins of past taxpayers of Newton, and shifting some of that burden a little forward to the future taxpayers of Newton. So what we did was we evaluated various plans of saying, the city currently is at 9.6%, and all the numbers I'm gonna talk about, this is the exact same slide deck that was given to the mayor and the administration last fall. So I'm gonna be consistent and work off of those numbers, which are based on the January 1st, 2022 actuarial valuation. So under the, under the current plan, we have 9.6%, as I said, that's 8.8% of our city budget today, will increase to 13.2% of our budget in 2029. We looked at, what if we said, let's be fully funded in 2031, 2032, 2033, et cetera, out to 2035, and individually, what would be the impact of each of those years? Saying, instead of being fully funded in 2030, let's stretch it out a year, two years, three years. We also looked at, let's think about keeping this a constant rate of the city budget and saying, let's grow it at 3.5%. So to be clear, none of these are a cut in funding, it's slowing the rate of growth of funding. So if we look at that 3.5% plan, you know, just the simple math, obviously, they're both growing at the same rate, and it stays constant at 8.8% of the city budget, and there is no crowding out of city services. Any rate of growth over 3.5% is going to have some amount of crowding out. Any amount of rate of growth below 3.5% is going to alleviate pressure and allow more growth in city services. That, that's just the simple math of this. So to put this in a little historical context, and I apologize, this slide is not in the deck. The this is, this is, this data is from the Controller's Annual Analysis. And over the last 20 years, we've seen about a 5% increase in retirement burden on the city budget. And this represents pension and OPEB, because as you go back further in time, that's, that's how it was presented as one number, so I've kept that consistent here. But certainly over the last 10 years, when it's broken out, it's entirely pension growth. The 4.5% cut that I'm referring to is gonna say, the amount of pressure this has put cumulatively over the city budget over the last 20 years is effectively going to double in the next six or seven years. And that's the pressure point we're dealing with, and again, the problem we're trying to solve. So, as we look at these plans, and I've shown you the percent of city budget, we can put some dollar numbers on them. So if we look again at our 3.5% plan, and this, again, this is just the benchmark of this is the rate of growth of the, of the, of the city, so it's a, it's a nice sort of easy, easy point to look at. Between 2023 and 2029, we would free up $90.6 million of cash for city services. Now, any one of you who's studied economics will know there's no free lunch. And beyond 2030, beyond 2029, for year 30 and beyond, we have to pay that bill. So we take in $90.6 million over the next six, seven years, and then from, for year 30 to year 32, instead of funding seven or eight million dollars under the city plan, we're still funding $50 million or so. That cumulatively is an incremental $117 million of funding. The difference of those two numbers is the, the impact, the fiscal impact of this to the city, which is to say, we didn't put that money in the trust to earn our assumed rate of return over these last six or seven years. And cumulatively, that number comes to $26.8 million. So again, it's, we're, we're bringing in $90.6 million over a six, seven-year period. We're paying out an incremental 117 over a couple of years. We don't earn the investment return, which, under all our assumptions, and obviously, these are assumptions, it's $26.8 million. And then we're fully funded, and we move on to the same city plan of putting roughly $50 million a year in OPEB. It just gets pushed back a couple of years. So this shows you for each of those plans from for year 31 through for year 35, what the impact of each of those numbers is. So this is just one, one other view of it. This is the current 9.6% plan, and this is the, showing the amount of dollars we're contributing to the pension trust every year, and then moving that, once it's fully funded, to that $50 million level for OPEB. And as you can see, there's a step function down because our peak funding is like $77, $78 million. And then that drops to, you know, $57 million between pension and OPEB together. If you look at the 3.5% plan, you see a much smoother weak line. We increase gradually to that $50 million level. We hit it in, in the middle of for year 32, and then we proceed along the same path. Just as one other example, if we look at the 2034 plan, we're barely increasing the, the amount we're funding every year. It's a, it's a very small rate of growth. And we actually never even get to that, we're funding $50 million a year. And then when we go to OPEB, suddenly we have a step function up. So this is another reason we sort of, you know, kind of coalesced around that 3.5% plan. It's a, it's a, you know, certainly at that point in time, a very smooth sort of glide slope into that run rate of, of funding the OPEB. So, because I know some of you want to know how, how the analysis actually worked, I'm gonna walk through this. I'm gonna do it rather quickly. But this is directly from the Siegel January 1st, 2022 actuarial report. And this is showing the cash flows they're forecasting we will need such that the value of assets in our pension trust will be sufficient to consider ourselves fully funded. There's a couple of things I should point out real quick here. This is a calendar year. Obviously, the city runs on a June 30 fiscal year, so there is a half-year mismatch there. This is using the market value of the assets in the pension trust. When we talk about funded, or I should say, we, when the retirement board talks about funded status, they're talking about the actuarial value of those assets, which has sort of a smoothing mechanism in it, because it wants to, it wants to dampen some of the volatility of the market goes, you know, up a lot as it did, you know, a couple of years during the pandemic, and then it goes, you know, down a lot, as it did last year. So just in, in, in terms of thinking order or magnitude here, at January 1st, 2022, we had a funded status of 61%. Again, based on the actuarial value of the assets. If you use the market value of the assets, which is 526 million, that represented 68% funded status. So to walk through these numbers and how this analysis works, we have our $40.8 million of contributions in for year 22. That grows to $77 million in our peak year for year 29. And again, you see that sort of step function down where the funding falls off a cliff, because we've reached that full funded status and we start putting $50 million towards OPEB. The simple math of this is, we take the beginning of year market value of assets, we pay administrative expenses, which grow at 2.75% per year. We pay out the benefits that actually have to be paid to current pensioners, and that is an actuarially driven forecast. We get contributions every year, both from employees and from the city. And employee contributions are forecast to grow at 2.75%. The 9.6% rate of growth of the employer contribution is really what we're here talking about. We earn a rate of return on those investments at 9, six, an assumed 6.95% per year. Our end-of-year market value of assets. And then that rolls into the beginning of year market value of assets for the following year, and it's the same process. That's the very simple math of how this schedule all fits together. So to compare the city's plan, again, the top panel is just straight from the actuarial report. The bottom panel is the 2033 plan. They both have the exact same $526 million market value of assets to start. Administrative expenses, benefits paid, employee contributions are all exactly the same numbers. None of those are impacted by this in any way. What changes? We're saying, instead of increasing the rate of growth of our employer contribution at 9.6%, we're gonna increase it at 1.6%, which is what's required to meet full funding status by the end of 2033. That gives us fewer dollars to invest. So while the rate of return on our investment is the same, the amount invested is not the same. And that produces the exact same amount of assets in the trust at the end of 2033. We're, we're fully funded as much as we were under the city's plan, the, the current plan at that point in time. So I want to address, you know, sort of what is the, the risk of doing this? The city plan could sustain a negative rate of return across the next 17 years and still meet full statutory funding. But it's not a realistic scenario, because that would mean in 2040, 25% of our budget would be going to funding. There's no practical way that's ever gonna happen. And if there was a negative, you know, rate of return over the next 17 years, we've got much bigger problems than this. We're, we're living in mud huts. The 3.5% plan that could see a rate of return down to 4.6%, still meet your 2040 statutory funding. And again, because it's growing at the same rate as the city, that would be 8.8% constant of the city budget through that entire period of time. The chart on the right here just shows you again, for, for some of those same plans, if we assume there's a 4% rate of growth, or, or return on investment, a 5% return on investment, a 6% in return on investment, in what year would each of these plans achieve that full funding status? Just to give you some sense of the, of the magnitude of, of how, you know, 100 basis points of investment Of investment return impacts each one of these. So. How reasonable is four percent or five percent or six percent or, you know, we use six point nine five percent right now. That's, that's the uh, the current actuarial assumption. So I look back. To nineteen eighty. On. The rate of return over ten years. Of a sixty forty benchmark portfolio, which is sort of the pension standard. It's sixty percent stocks, forty percent bonds. That, that's sort of what most pension managers. Benchmark themselves to. And during that course of time. Only during like the absolute depths of the financial crisis. Would. We have been at risk of not meeting that statutory requirement. Now, again, if you're going to be talking about. You know, an extended environment of. Markets going down, you know. In, in, you know, twenty, thirty, forty percent type levels. Then. Everyone's at risk. There's, there's no way you get there, period. And, you know, I, I would be very willing to bet that statutory deadline is going to move. Because there's, there's, there's no municipality on earth that could, that could meet that. So just to address what this does. To the O P E D. As I think we're all aware, and I've said a couple of times, the city's plan is, once we hit full funding on the pension, we move to funding O P E D. So as I said, this effectively.
Could I interrupt you for one second?
Please.
I just want to, I, as I pointed out during my little introduction. The plan really belongs to the retirement board. It says the city's plan everywhere. But that's the plan accepted by the retirement board. So it's their, it's, you know, just think of it as the retirement plans. Retirement Board's plan as opposed to the city plan.
Very, very fair, very fair. And, and, you know, we, we had just used the semantics of cities plan as we were talking about this. Um, but yes, it is, it is the retirements plan board, and that's a, that's a good point. Thank you. Um. So. Effectively, as I said, we're, we're just shifting things out a few years. If we're fully funded in twenty thirty-three instead of twenty thirty. That just means. We start putting fifty million dollars into O P E D in twenty thirty-four instead of twenty thirty-one. We miss out on the assumed. Investment returns. Of that fifty million dollars a year for three years. That's the impact of this. How does that accumulate? If I looked in twenty forty-five. And said, for each of these plans, how much less is in the O P E D trust? And it's not insignificant numbers. You know, if you extend to twenty thirty-three. It's, it's three hundred and eighty million dollars less, which represents. The, the lesser amount of funding that the. The cities actually put into it. And the foregone investment returns. But. You still have a billion dollars in that trust in that point in time. And. Just as I pointed out, one thing that's worth noting. You know, there is a difference between pension and O P E D. One is statutory, one is contractual. Under the state's law currently, we have to be fully funded by twenty forty. There is no requirement. Under state law that we have to be funded in O P E D. If you were to look at this in, in the corporate realm, if you looked at like S and P five hundred companies. They're going to be mostly fully funded on their pension. You know, depending what study you look at, what period of time, they're going to be ninety, a hundred percent funded on their pension liabilities. And they're going to be about. Twenty to thirty percent funded on their O P E D liabilities. And there's reasons for that. If you talk to a, a corporate CFO, they're going to say, well, there's just so much variability. You have healthcare inflation, you have. Healthcare legislation, you know, what happens if. You know, the, the United States becomes a single payer entity in, in the fifteen years from now. There's, there's, there's so much variability around it. So you fund some. To be able to withstand shocks to any of those variables. But typically. Companies do not fund at all. So things have changed, certainly since we gave that presentation to the mayor last year. And uh, I just want to spend a few quick minutes updating what has changed. So we've seen a fifteen percent decline in the trust asset values. And as Susan, uh, President Albright mentioned. It's important to recognize, we don't have all the numbers. We can only analyze the numbers we do have. So what we did, we said, let's. Move that level of assets down to the current level in the trust. Which is now four hundred and forty-four million dollars. And let's hold everything else constant. Those are, I want to be clear, those are not great assumptions, and the actual way, the actuarial data is going to differ from this. I am recognizing those are. These are not good assumptions. They're just all we have to work with. But to give you an order of magnitude, that level of difference, we thought it would be helpful. So. I also want to emphasize, as I said before. You know, even though these numbers look worse. And they are going to look more dire than the reality. Because of that actuarial value of the assets. Um, and because we're not changing the liability, we're holding that constant, these numbers are going to look worse than the reality. But. None of this, the, the, the order of magnitude of changes we're talking about is not putting any pensioner at risk. It's about allocating that burden between taxpayer groups, as I said. So this is, this basically some of the same charts we looked at before. On the left-hand side is the projected city budget growing at three and a half percent. We have our nine point six percent rate of growth in funding in the, in the pension. And that would show you that that moves full funding out to twenty thirty-two. So the impact of that lower starting level of trust assets. Pushes that from twenty thirty to twenty thirty-two. I think the retirement board said the actuary hinted it was probably twenty thirty-one. And, and that's the difference of them using the actuarial values, which we don't have, and us just starting with this market value number. The, the middle chart there. This shows you on a year-by-year basis. The amount of cash that's freed up. Versus the nine point six percent status quo. So all the positive numbers you see. Are. Cash freed up for city services. And then, as you see, when you hit that inflection point of the city would have been funded under nine point six, but we've still got to fund. Because we're growing at a lower rate. Those numbers become negative. And that's the amount that we have to incrementally fund. And again, the net difference of those two is the foregone investment returns, and those are all summarized in the uh, in the bottom there. And then what I think is the most relevant. Is. What is the percent of the city budget? So this is that first group of numbers we looked at. What is this percent of the city budget consumed by funding the pension trust at each of these levels? Our eight point eight percent. Would now grow to fourteen point eight percent. And so we would be looking at roughly a six percent cut in city services between now and twenty thirty-two. Now, again, I would. That is, it will not be that dire. But these are the numbers we have to work with. As you look across any of these other plans, and then, you know, just to use twenty thirty-five as an example. Our eight point eight percent grows. To a peak of ten point three percent. So you're looking at a two point one percent crowding out of city services, but over a longer period of time. And that's the magnitude of the um. That's the magnitude of the difference we're, we're talking about here. So. As uh, Susan, uh, or President Albright, sorry, mentioned. I'm, I'm used to the much more informal nature of uh. The school committee. Um, as President Albright mentioned. Uh. The mayor has put forth a plan where we would. Increase the cola base from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand. Over a three-year period. Again, we don't have all the numbers to be precise about the, the real impact of that. But in looking at that two thousand eighteen memo, which was in the uh, in the packet. The city's actuary at that time estimated that was for a one thousand dollar increase in the base. That was three point two million dollar estimate in liability. So that's sort of the present value. Of that future stream of cash flows. The future value of that stream of cash flows, and I think this was looked at over like an eleven-year period, was eight point seven million dollars. And that summarized, this is straight off of the actuaries' numbers um. Back in uh, back in that period of time. So. While we don't have the um, the numbers to be precise, I believe this is probably still order of magnitude accurate. That. A thousand dollar increase in the cola base is going to equate to something like a mid-three million dollar of liability. But keep in mind, that's, that's on top of, you know, what is currently a seven hundred and seventy million dollar liability. So. You know, I think. My personal um. View is, you know, this is, this is probably a reasonable plan. To proceed with so long as. We're doing, we're, we're getting the amount of relief that makes this all sustainable. And. You know. That, that's to me, and you know, this is certainly the discussion I've had with the um. With the retirement board and uh, in particular, Mr. Widalbo is to say. Look. If, if we're going to do this, and I know the, the retirement board is, is reticent to make changes. And certainly doesn't want us coming back every year, looking at this as, you know, we can always go back to this well. It makes sense to do it once. And to do it sustainably. So that. It works for our pensioners, it works for our retirees, and it works for the city. And I think that's the framework we should be, we should be thinking about this. So. Uh, President Albright, I can pause there, and um, I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Bresky, and I also just want to note, we've been joined by nearly the entire council. We're up to twenty-three counselors. I'm not going to try to name everybody I missed. Just want to. Uh, recognize that fact. Uh, we have counselor, President Albright, I didn't know if you wanted a comment first. I know Mr. Bresky turned it to you. Did you want to say anything?
No, no.
Can I go to hands?
Yeah.
Okay, we have Counselor Kales, followed by Counselor.
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. So this is terrific. Thank you to the gang of five or whatever you're calling yourselves. Um. I think this is great work and, and. Mr. Bresky, I think that you explained it in such a way that it simplifies it and really made it clear. So I really appreciate it. I think I remember sitting, sitting when SETI um presented this first. Years ago, saying, there's no way this is going to happen later in the um. In the cycle because it's going to take up too much of a percentage of our budget. And. I'm wondering if any of you spoke, has spoken to. Um, crafters of this plan, and I know that it's a retirement board plan, but it must have been in conjunction with. Maureen, and it might have been the financial audit. Group, I'm not sure. But I, I'm wondering if you talked to them to understand their rationale and how they actually thought it was realistic in the later years. Their original plan.
President Albright or Mr. Bresky, do you want to?
So from my perspective, um. We have, we would love to hear, we do, we do not have a, a statement from the original crafters about how we were going to manage to do this. But, and that's something that we, that's a missing piece of information.
Okay. Because that to me would be, you know, it's just. It would be, would be important. I think that the recommendation or the three and a half percent plan, whether it's a recommendation or not. It sounds, it sounds like the right approach, actually, even with the O P E D situation, that it increases our, our liability there. Um, the fact that it's not statutory, I, which was a, a great point. Um, really helps and. We. This is a one-time situation. I said, I think you're right. We need to go with our best plan. And yeah, it sounds like, I, I don't know what the ma, did, did you go through what the mayor's plan was?
Yeah, so the, the. The. All we know about the mayor's plan currently. Is. She intends to um. Grant the retirement board that thousand dollar cola increase each year for the next three years. And then that would. You know, they would provide enough relief such that we would be able to um, address some of the issues, but not all of the issues. But we don't know what those numbers are. There's no numbers presented to us.
But it's not as much relief as the three and a half percent plan, and basically we have, we have one shot at this, correct?
I, I mean, that, that's been the retirements board very clear stance that they do not want us coming back.
Okay. That's, that's a very important point. Thank you.
And i- if I can just um, say, you know, in terms of the three and a half percent plan, I mean, that's. You know, we, we never went in to say, this is the plan. And realistically, you know. There, there's, there's a number higher than that, that certainly works and, and likely provides the city what it needs. Um. In, in terms of the uh. Uh, the crafting of this plan and, and, you know. While we've, we've tried to really engage the mayor and, and um, move at this together, I, I don't really have any insight into uh. You know, in, into how they're thinking about. These outer years when this gets really, really painful. But we should, I mean, I will give the mayor, uh, and, you know, at that time, I believe she was an alderman. A lot of credit for. We can only have this discussion because we've done what we've done so far. We were so far behind a decade ago. And. You know. We've, you know, you saw that with the, we've, we've already, you know, eaten up five percent of our budget over the last twenty years. That, that, that's real hard work that's been done. And I mean, we should kind of celebrate that fact. That we are in the position we're in. And yeah, you know what? We're, we're still behind some other cities and, and things like that. But the fact that we're even able to have this conversation is a testament to. The, the plan that was put in place and the fiscal responsibility that we've had over the last decade.
Thank you.
Counselor Downs, then Counselor Gent.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wanted a couple of clarifying questions first, if I might. Um, and I, um, you know, I may have had a lapse in attention. I'm fighting viruses, so we go. Um, the increase of the cost of living for retirees that's being requested, you had a number for um. Per one thousand of additional base. Um, was it three million dollars of additional liability that it ends up to be?
Yeah, so I, I want to differentiate between the, the present value of that and the future value of that, so. And I'm taking this straight from the um, that, that memo in two thousand eighteen. The. But I, I kind of independently, you know, did some back of the envelope math and it, it makes sense. So I think, I think uh, Ms. Lemieux did this over an eleven-year period. It will create. Eight point seven million. Of. Incremental funding, and really it will do that out in the, in the last year when we become fully funded. So the difference of the, of the cash flow schedule changes very little. Between now and the year of final funding. But in that year of final funding, you're, you're taking almost that whole eight point seven million. But. If you discount that back today, because. Um, you know, the, the, the value of a dollar. At that, what was in that point in time, twelve years forward, is, is less than the value of a dollar today. And I believe the actuary used a discount rate equal to the. Rate of return on investment, which I think was seven point two five percent at that time. That math works out to that eight point seven is, is in present value terms, three point two million.
Um. Okay, so it'd be three point two million in. Um, fiscal year thirty additional that. We need to pay down. Is that correct?
It would be closer to eight point seven in for year thirty. But that's effectively worth three point two million today.
I see. When you say deferred investment gains, what does that mean?
So that's the um, that, that's the actuarial term. Um, so this, this goes to that concept I was talking about, thinking about the market value of the assets and the actuarial value of the assets. So. The. Actuary presented these two different um scenarios of, you know, one was sort of more market value-based. And one was more actuarial value-based. So. As I said, in, in January first, twenty twenty-two. The market value of our assets in the trust was five hundred and twenty-six million. The actuarial value was four hundred and seventy-two million. Because that was representative of that five hundred and twenty-six of. Market gains that were in excess of our assumed. You know, seven-ish percent. So that kind of gets smoothed out through time. What we'll likely see in the current year. Is either that come to a much more level, or maybe actuarial value of assets, while it should be higher than market value of assets, given the fifteen percent decline we've seen. So that's kind of um. You know, along the lines of what that deferred investment gain is, is representing.
All right, I'm still not sure I understand it, but fine. Um, and that. You know, should the retirement board. Agree? Agree with any of these deferred um. Investment plans, um, shall we call them, the three point five percent, the twenty thirty-four or whatever. That's not money that would be available to stave off cuts in the fiscal twenty-four budget. Is that correct?
Well, it depends how you go about that. So if you wanna, uh, let me go back to. So I'll just look at these two. So this is, again, the current plan versus that three point five percent plan as it existed on January first, twenty twenty-two. There's an infinite number of ways you can get to full funding. For simplicity purposes, we just assumed a constant rate of growth of funding. It doesn't have to be that way. You could smooth that in any way. You could say, you know what, we're gonna drop it cuz we need instant relief, and then we're gonna grow it faster. There's any number of ways you can get to that same endpoint of, we have enough value, with the value of the assets in the trust is sufficient at a future point in time. So if you're using this constant rate of growth concept, then you will always see bigger benefits. Accumulate every single year. Relatively small benefits to begin with, larger benefits uh as each year passes.
Okay, um, and I also wanted to clarify that the money that we free up. Um, for current use rather than future use in this scenario is um. Less money that we have to cut from our current budgets, not really uh free money or additional money. It's, it's just money that we no longer have to find out of current expenses. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, it's, it, when I talk about that four point four percent, you know, effective cut or crowding out, we're lessening that.
Okay, um, and then I just, I guess a request that I would want to keep in mind is. Um, the effect of an increase in the COLA on our retirees, um, for whom this is sometimes their only source of. Of um, income in, in their later years, um, that. Uh, you know, changes to that don't just affect our retirees, they also are what our current. Employees and future employees look at when they're thinking about. Um, you know, do I go to work for Newton? Do I go to work for Wellesley? So I think we ought to um keep that in mind as well. That's my um, my own um, take on this. Um, this is incredibly uh informative and um sort of addresses what's always been a nagging concern in the back of my head. Um, I guess, uh, the caution is, um, it's not really up to us as the council. To do this, um, or school committee to do this, it's um, it's basically a plea to another board. And um, I know they're listening. Take care. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Downs, the only thing that I'll add to that is you're a hundred percent right. It is, it is a plea to them. Um, however, the retirement board had also indicated at their meeting that. The increase in the COLA base would be key to any deliberations they may um pursue. And that does require council approval. So there is some interplay uh that may come our way. Counselor Gentile, then Counselor Crossley.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, first of all, uh, nice to meet you, Mr. Bresky, and, and thank you for your work. Um, to Counselor Downs, I can understand why you asked the question that you did about um the COLA increase. Um, while the liability is three and a half million dollars. Unless you wanna find three and a half million dollars to put into the retirement board immediately to cover the costs. Um, it's gonna cost the retirement system, and this is the reality. It's gonna cost um close to eight. Point seven million dollars. The last time we looked at it was eight point six five. What hasn't been stated, and why we have resisted this in the past, and it was not an easy thing to do because. It looks like, um, you know, it's a vote against retirees. Is the benefit to our individual retirees is two dollars and fifty cents a month, thirty dollars a year. So when we were faced with the decision, and we had a retirement system that wasn't close to being fully funded, and it still is not. It just didn't, the math didn't make sense to obligate the system. On a, for an additional eight point six million dollars for such a modest um benefit uh to our retirees. Um, I wanna make two quick uh comments, two quick questions, and then let somebody else speak. I, I'm referring to the comment letter that um was uh read to the retirement board. Um, on the first page in the middle paragraph, there's some comments about cuts. And I want to caution people about um when we use the word cuts. Um, I know what you mean, but to other people, it sounds like we are actually reducing the bottom line of the school department's budget. And I recently checked this out, and the facts are, over the last five years. The school department's budget has grown from two hundred and twenty-seven point five million dollars. To two hundred and sixty-two point one million dollars. That's an increase of thirty-four point six million dollars over the last five years. So I bristle when people imply that somehow we're cutting the schools. Because I happen to think that we um do a good job of funding our schools. They can always use more, I get it. But I want to make sure that people understand that we're not talking about, and we have not ever. In my forty-two years, and Mr. Bresky, I don't know if you know or not, but I started out on the school committee. And um, I was the chair for three years. I also was very much involved in everything retirement, including this plan. So if you want to speak at any time, I'd, I'd be happy to speak with you. Um, so let's please just be um careful when we talk about what we mean by cuts. The second thing I just wanted to point out is, in the text of our um agenda today, it talks about. The retirement board's request for a cost of living on the COLA. Um, as the chi, as the president pointed out. That's not in front of us. They have yet to take that vote. They could take it as early as this afternoon, I don't know. But so far, they have not actually taken that official position, so um, time will tell. Um, as far as questions, on the second page of the letter. Um, it says that, just under the chart, it says that we found that if we increased pension funding annually. At three and a half percent versus the current nine point six, we would meet our obligation by two thousand and thirty-two. And then when I look up at the chart, um, and it says, uh, the far left-hand corner, the fully funded year. It goes thirty, thirty-one, and then it goes three and a half percent plan, and then it goes to thirty-two. Is that because um, we actually get there sort of in year thirty-one and a half? Is that why that's sort of stuck in there?
Uh, yes, yes. So all of those, the, the twenty thirty-one plan, twenty thirty-two plan, all of those are to say, what is the. Um, the value of the assets at the end of that calendar year. And the three and a half percent plan, you'll see fits right in between for year thirty-one and for year thirty-two. So that means it would be sometime mid-year, twenty thirty-two.
Okay, um, and I understand that you're not making any official recommendation, but it does appear. That at least there's some support for this, you know, for the three and a half percent plan. Um, now, as you indicated, things have changed, and um. The uh retirement board is already considering um extending out the schedule a year, not to free up. Additional money for the operating budget, which is what this is all about, but because of the poor investment return. Um, they need to extend the schedule, and um. Um, and, and as you said, you think that it could be that they might need to do it, you know, for two years. Um, time will tell. Um, so if I may have missed this, but um. Do you, have you been able to estimate that, under the most recent investment terms? Um, how long would we need to extend the schedule on the three and a half percent plan to make this all work?
Sure, so if we look at the uh. Let me just go up to. So, as it is right now, um, and again, keep in mind, I, I want to be so clear that these numbers are worse than the reality. Uh, if we're starting with that four hundred and forty-four million dollars of cash in the trust. And I'll recognize as well, I know there's thirty million dollars of, uh, I shouldn't say cash in the trust, of securities in the trust. And there's thirty million dollars of cash sitting outside the trust. I have not included that at all in this analysis. But if we're just using the four hundred and forty-four million dollars, four point seven five percent is what gets you to a twenty thirty-five. Uh, funded date. So three point seven five was like, uh, it was, it was twenty thirty-sixish.
Twenty thirty-five or twenty thirty-six?
Again, using these, this, you know, what I have said is a relatively poor set of assumptions. It's probably a couple of years in front of that.
Okay, so I think at some point, and I, and as you keep pointing out, and I keep trying to point out, Counselor Kales. To our, uh, to my colleagues, please make sure that we have all the numbers before you lock yourself into a position. Um, it's, and it, it's extremely important. So when we, when we do have more numbers, and I don't think that, from what I'm hearing. That our actuary is going to have them until the, the May meeting. Um, but when we do have better numbers, more up-to-date numbers, it's gonna be really important, just as we did with the COLA situation. Um, understand how much extra money it's gonna cost in the end. Um, we need, we're gonna need to know how much money it's gonna cost us to extend the schedule. Uh, from say, two thousand and thirty-one to thirty-three, thirty-four, or thirty-five. That's an extremely important number. Uh, for um people to understand. Um, one other question, um. I've been hearing lately, there's been some talk about um retirees' um health benefits. Um, is there anything, um, are there any changes? Or have there been any suggestions to changes to the retirees' health plan benefits?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of?
And not by us.
Okay, um, and then the last question, and I'll, as I said, others I know want to have a, a shot at this. Would you care to offer an opinion, um, as someone with your financial background? Um, if it makes sense to give individuals thirty dollars a year. Um, and increase the liability of, you know, of the system as much as we are, never mind. Increasing the COLA two more times and what that's going to cost. I mean, do you have a personal opinion on that? Because I've made my personal opinion clear. It hasn't changed since two thousand and eighteen. And I've got more family that are retirees in the system than anybody on the city council. Um, so, you know, I wasn't very popular for voting against it on, in eighteen. And I continue to feel it was the right vote, and it's the more responsible thing to do for the city long term. So I'd welcome if you had a comment on it.
So, I mean, I think your point is well-taken, that uh, you know, uh, uh, in- increasing it um. Thirty, uh, or uh, sorry, uh, three thousand dollars over, over three years, that's gonna be, you know, a run rate of ninety incremental dollars a year. On top of the three hundred and sixty dollars a year of COLA. Um, so, you know, in the grand scheme of things, uh, you know, yeah, it's. I- it's not a ton of money, but I also don't want to diminish what that might mean for some folks as well. Um, you know, it, it, it. I'm sure it does matter to some folks, so I. I, I get your point. Um, I think that's a, you know, tha- that's a judgment for, for you all to make of. Does that make sense in, in the context of um freeing up incremental funds for the, for the city?
Can I jump in for a second?
Let me just, let me, let me just conclude with this, and then anybody can jump in. I've been consistent since day one. Our obligation is to make sure that our retirement system is solvent. And a big part of that is getting it um as, uh, fully funded. Um, as soon as we reasonably can, which is why we ended up with the schedule that we did. I do think, I don't know of any obligation that we have to fund OPEB by a certain date. That's, I never. Assigned on to that, and I think that we can um definitely look at that. But our obligation is to keep the retirement board saw, the retirement fund solvent. Get it fully funded and to not mess in any way with um retirees' health benefits. That's what I, what I heard from a lot of people. They're concerned about, um, you know, no negative effect. Um, to their health benefits, and those are the things that are, I think, those are the things that are important to me. Uh, not giving them two dollars and fifty cents a month and saying that we helped out our retirees. That's more symbolic than anything. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Lipoff, did you want to comment very quickly?
Yes, yes, just to jump in here. Um, your goals are our goals, Counselor Gentile. I just wanted to say about the COLA. Um, that I tend to agree with the way that Counselor Gentile is looking at this as well. Um, it is on the table because one of the triggers for us to come and meet with you. At this time is because the mayor came to put forth a plan of her own. To do something that is not um as forward-looking, but is trying to take care of some immediate needs. And she put on the table COLA increases in her presentation to uh the pension board. And that is why we must speak about what that would look like as well. That was triggered by uh the mayor. Just want to let everybody know.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Crossley, then Lucas, and Counselor Gentile, if you wouldn't mind just putting your hand down. Thank you.
Um, so much to say. I, I want to echo thanks to Mr. Bresky. Um, I, this is not my wheelhouse in particular, but I, so I.
We cannot hear you, Counselor Crossley. Can you?
Sorry?
Can you just increase your volume a little bit?
Increase my volume, I'm sorry. Um, uh, yes. Let's see. That better?
Yes.
Okay, uh, apologies. Um, Mr. Bresky, this is not my wheelhouse. I understand this in a oversimplified way. But I really appreciate um this work. Uh, I studied it as soon as it went into the packet and um. Called uh President Albright right away because I needed to understand the charts. But how I understand it, I think I just would like your nod, uh, is similar to a decision I might make about selecting a mortgage. Um, in that, you know, I could choose a fifteen-year, twenty-year, twenty-five, thirty-year mortgage. Um, if I'm a young person, I have, I'm planning to have children and a family and. A lot of uncertainty, you know, which I think is always the case for the city. We always have a lot of uncertainty. I might choose to pay over a longer period of time, and in a good year, pay, uh, pay more as I could. Cuz understand that I pay a whole lot more interest the longer I take to pay off the principal. And that's how I understand this. Um. I don't know that we have the opportunity. Um, a- and I do hope the retirement board, I want to say this as a city councillor and as a citizen, uh, takes. These ideas very seriously and thoughtfully, um. Because it's clear to me that our city services, whether it's schools or anything else, get crowded out. The more we continue to put into this fund. The more we continue to put into this fund faster. Um, at the, at, and at the current rate we're going. Um, and it's, um. That, that's just for, uh, to maintain a level of service. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to, to think. Of this as taking out a longer-term mortgage. But pay, if we have a really good year, or as this cash is freed up and we're in the wonderful position of. Um, uh, allowing ourselves to build city services, if that's ever the case. Um. You know, that we could pay it down further. Um, is, is there? Is that a way the retirement board could choose, uh, and, and we could choose to handle this?
I, I mean, I think your analogy is, is, uh, is correct. In, in thinking about, and I, you know, I, I've hopefully been clear that there's, you know, there's a trade-off in any one of these scenarios. It's more money now. Means you have to outlay more. When you wouldn't have otherwise had to do toes, just, just in, is, as you, you know, the difference of a fifteen or a thirty-year mortgage. It's, it's, it's a good analogy.
So you're basically saying that in this, if, if we're, if you're recommending the three and a half percent. Scenario, or, or that's what we're, um, looking at as in comparison, not that you're recommending anything at this point. Um, you pretty much said there's twenty-eight million dollars in additional interest. Uh, if you will.
Foregone investment return.
Okay, that, that's a term that I, I don't understand, and I, so, uh, I'm, again, I'm oversimplifying, I'm sure, but. If I'm trying to explain this to anyone else in the community, um. It's, it's money we have to pay out that we otherwise would not. Is that correct?
It's money we did not earn. So that twenty-seven million dollars.
Yep.
It's representative of. That ninety million dollars that gets freed up. And applied to city services. Was not invested. And it was not earning six point nine five percent. And again, that, that's cumulatively over the course of, of that, um, you know, six, seven-year period. So that represents the. Investment return we did not earn because we did not invest those assets.
Okay. Um. So I guess I, uh, Counselor Gentile suggested that the, we won't have the actual numbers. Current actual numbers until May. The retirement board won't see those till May, so we won't see them till May. Is that, is that about right?
I, I don't know when the actuary will, uh, present numbers.
We're, that's a, an educated guess. Um. I, I guess I'll leave it. I want to thank you hugely for all of this work that you've done and the GLAM group appropriately named. Um. And I also want to thank you for, um, earlier recognizing that. I think your words were, we're only in this position because of all the hard work that's been done to date. Um, when I came into council in two thousand and ten, the city was in a financial mess. And, um. You know, it just was not being, we weren't investing where we were supposed to be investing. Um, and we weren't paying into our, uh, pension and OPEB funds as we were supposed to be. Um, and. It's, uh, not being a financial person. I'm just a bricks and mortar person, you know, but it's, it's still. I, I can't not pay my mortgage. Um, and. I, I don't know how that came to be, um. In every respect, but, uh, we really were in terrible shape, and I have to give. This administration, as well as the previous administration, a whole lot of credit for at least getting us to the point where we could have this conversation. Um, um. Uh, which I know, uh, this admin, the people in this administration, Mayor Fuller and, and, uh, Maureen Lemieux had a lot to do with setting us on a course. Um. Uh, so, but I, I am also very, very concerned about. Um, what this course means to our ability to provide. Um, a healthy level of service to our community. Leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lucas, then Danberg.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. Uh, so, good morning, everyone, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Bresky. Uh, for your presentation and GLAM, uh, for the work you've done leading up to this meeting. Um, the presentation that, uh, you all worked on, uh, for, uh, this meeting has been very helpful. Um. And, uh. I didn't know we were gonna have so many people attend this meeting at eight o'clock in the morning. It's now, uh, not nine twenty. And there's still many people on this meeting, and I'm sure many, uh, more will watch a recording of this. Um, so, uh, thank you. Um, I have a few questions. Uh, the first one revolves around COLA. We didn't spend a whole lot of time on it, uh, in the presentation. But, um, just a few questions on COLA. Um, does adjusting, uh, the COLA? Uh, affect the date when we fully pay off the pension? And will it affect any parts of the operating budget?
So, yeah, I mean, it is an increase in the liability, so therefore it has an impact on the funding schedule? Um, cause what that will affect if, if, um. If I go back to the, the cash flow forecast, so. The amount of COLA is going to affect those benefit payments that are being paid out on a year-by-year basis. So that's how it, th- those numbers all go up by a little bit. And that's how it, 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 it injects its way into the analysis. So your liability is increasing, so it does have an impact. Although again, you know, per thousand dollars, if you're talking about a, a mid-three-million-dollar liability. On an existing seven hundred and seventy-some-million-dollar liability, it's. You know, i- it's not moving the needle a ton.
Okay. All right, so minimal. More or less. Um. And, uh, did I, um. I don't know what slide it was, but did I hear you say that, um, you and, uh, GLAM. Recommended, uh, a one percent, um, percent growth. To the pension ob- obligation, um, to pay it off?
Uh, no, so, um, the, the. This is where I probably talked about the one point six percent growth and just comparing what was, uh, the, the two thousand and thirty-three plan as of Jan twenty-two versus. The, uh, the status quo. Um, we did. Absolutely not recommend that. Um, in fact, we haven't recommended anything. Uh, we have presented a range of scenarios to think about. Um, and, you know, again, we've, we've mostly focused on this three and a half percent. Uh, concept, just because it's such an easy benchmark to talk about, because it keeps. Pension constant as a rate, as a percent of the city budget.
Okay. And, um. And can you go back to the, um, it was one of the later slides, um, about how much money we're going to, uh, free up? Uh, when you compare the, uh, payoff plans. Um.
As, as the, under the, under what we originally analyzed in two thousand and twenty-two or the?
It was the one where you had three different, um, charts. There you go. Yeah, this one right here. Um, so if I'm looking at this, uh, the, and you compare it to the nine point six, uh, percent. If we pay it off, for example, in FY thirty-three, that's seven point one percent growth. We're gonna save a million, then two point two, then three point five, five point one, and so on. Um. And. That's if we go with that plan with a seven point one percent. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, uh, that is the amount, that one million, two point two, three point five. That is the amount of cash that is freed up relative to the status quo. So I wouldn't characterize it as it's going, if you look at the, the, the sums at the bottom. I wouldn't characterize it as it's gonna save us seventy-one million dollars, and then it's gonna cost us ninety-six million dollars. Cause this isn't really savings and costs. As I said, it's sort of the utility of those dollars today versus the utility of investing those dollars. So think of that as, yes, this is the amount that will be freed up. For city services. Again, assuming that constant rate of growth. Relative to continuing on at nine point six percent. And then the eighteen million and seventy-eight million is the amounts. We'll have to pay in those out years that we wouldn't have had to pay because we've already would have been fully funded. That make sense?
Yeah, okay. All right, well, uh, thank you, um, Mr. Bresky, and to the councillors who worked on this, and, uh. That's all I have, uh, today, uh, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Danberg, then Malick.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and thank you, Mr. Bresky, and, and, uh, everyone else that has worked on this. This is, um. A very illuminating, um, discussion, and, um, I think from a thirty-thousand-foot level. Um, I am, uh, I, I certainly understand it, but need to get into the weeds a little bit more to. Understand the numbers. Uh, there are a lot of moving pieces here, um, and you've presented a huge amount of meat and material. Um, uh, Counselor Crossley's comment about, uh, looking at it sort of like a mortgage is a good one. Um, on a mortgage, the, the difference, uh, between that and this, as I see it, is that. In a mortgage, you, uh, when you stretch it out, you owe more interest to the bank on money that they've loaned you. And in this case, we are foregoing, uh, money that we did not invest because we needed to use it. Um, and the investment would have generated, uh, returns at six point. Nine five or whatever that number was, and, and I think that's a, that's an aggressive number, um, certainly in, in today's environment. Um, and we cannot, over a period of time, ever know what the markets are gonna do and, and what the economic, um. Uh, picture is gonna be. Um, our original plan ba- was based on assumptions that, uh. Can never be completely accurate over time, and. Uh, and we're probably meant to be tweaked over time. They did the best they could back then, and we're doing the best that we can now, but we're also looking out ten years. Um, as we're looking back ten or twelve years, um, in, and how close the numbers were to where, where we actually are now. Um. Three and a half percent has been pretty close to the reality of what we've been able to take in. Um, due to two and a half percent plus growth. Um, and we have certainly come a long way over the past ten years, um, as a couple of people have commented. Um, from, uh, sticking our head in the sand and doing nothing, uh, to fund pension and OPEB to, um, uh. Having a plan, sticking to the plan, and doing the best, uh, we can. We are, the reality is that, uh, we've come to a point where it's not sustainable in a practical way. Uh, and I can certainly see that. Um, it complicated by the failure of the operating override. Um, it certainly looks like changes are in order in order for us to continue to run as a city. Um, and, and, uh, maintain, uh, basic services for, for our residents. So you have, um, oh, because of your hard work here, laid out. Um, some scenarios and have laid out a scenario that. And we need a scenario that we can live with, uh, that will get us to where we need to be in a reasonable amount of time. Um, the cash flow forecast, uh, chart that I won't ask you to go back to. Um, on the three and a half percent plan. Gives us, um, a constant rate of growth, um, that allows us to get to where we. Uh, need to be in twenty thirty-two or three. I forget exactly, um. Where we were, it was the one that showed that we were at something like fifty-seven million. Um, and time will tell on our investments, um, uh, in the next. Ten or twelve years as to whether this is sustainable, but. I like the idea that we, um, are looking at this now with an understanding that. Um, the reality is that we need to both fund pension, get to OPEB. And maintain services in the city, and with what we have right now. Uh, that's not possible, so we need to make a tweak. Um, I, um. Look forward to getting the final numbers in May. Um, in the meanwhile, uh, I'm gonna dive, like everybody else will, into this, uh, and, and. Study the numbers and see what the, the possible scenarios are, but this three and a half percent plan to me right now. Looks pretty reasonable, and that's, uh, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Malick, then Oliver.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I guess what struck me here is, and thanks for being on this chart, um. The three and a half percent, uh, plan, you know, looked great when it was, uh. Fully funded in thirty years, thirty-one and a half essentially, but, um, this change from, and, and I realize it's like. Reflecting one bad year last year, um, but suddenly you're kind of, um. Off the, off the edge of the chart here into FY thirty-six-ish being fully funded. And I, I, I understand that. Actual numbers may. Turn out better, or using the actuarial numbers and smoothing the bad years with the good years, um. You wouldn't necessarily repeat that, but it seems like. You know, another bad year or two bad years in a row, um, if we adopted the three point five percent plan, uh. And we had another couple of bad years in a row down in the future, it could potentially put in jeopardy the, um, uh. Twenty, uh, thirty, uh, pardon me, yeah, twenty thirty, um, twenty forty fully funding date.
Yep, so, um. You know, what I would say is. Looking at this after a fifteen percent decline, and it was a, it was a uniquely bad year for a, um. Uh, the, the form of investment that takes place here, you know, the, typically you might see. When, uh, you know, stocks are falling a lot, bonds are going up because interest rates are, are going lower, and we, we saw everything go down this year. Um, so. You know, it's probably, you know, you probably don't want to think about, and this is why actuarial values exist. You don't want to think about locking yourself into. A plan after an up thirty percent year or a down fifteen percent year, thinking that's gonna be. Um, you know, the, the, the run rate, so to speak. And, you know, I, I think about this as, let's assume. We were fully funded this year. We came in and we had, um, let's just say we had a billion-dollar liability and a billion dollars in the trust. And. The market, the, the value of our assets fell the same fifteen percent. So now we have a billion-dollar liability and eight hundred and fifty million dollars in the trust. So we went from fully funded. To now only eighty-five percent funded on a market value basis in one year's time. What would be our reaction to that? We'd probably just keep the plan going as it is, saying, okay, well, we had a bad year. We'll have good years that will offset it. So I think that's the, you know, from a very big picture, the right mindset. You know, I do think, look, you know. The, again, the three and a half percent was chosen as a benchmark. For, you know, what if it stayed constant as a percentage of growth of the city budget? The right number is prob-, you know, right, there is no right number, but, you know, I would say, you know, the, the, the optimal number. Is probably somewhere north of there. Um, but, you know, where it is, I mean, that's, that's gonna be a function of how the numbers come in, what the retirement board thinks. You know, whatever all your influence, uh, as a city council is in this process, and, and, you know, that's gotta be figured out.
Wh- when you say north of there, do you mean something higher than three point five percent?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think, look, if you were gonna make me put a pin on it. Um, which again, this is, this is not an exercise in precision. I don't know, it's, it's probably somewhere in the fours or fives kind of range. Is, is where, you know, I would guess, you know, the, the city's getting the money it needs to run the city. And the, uh, you know, the, the, the retirement board is getting what it needs in terms of, um. You know, meeting the needs of this liability and doing it in a, in a really fiscally prudent way, and, you know. Not, not risking, uh, not coming anywhere close to risking that, uh, that twenty forty date. Not not risking uh, not coming anywhere close to risking that uh, that twenty forty day.
Okay, yeah, I guess I think I. I I remember back in twenty seventeen saying that this nine point six percent increase per year. It was a formula, it wasn't really a plan, because we didn't have any idea how we would. Be dealing with the the out years, uh, but it, but we did benefit from having a, an aggressive. Uh. Percent increase per year starting out, and you know, as been said before, we're a lot better off now for having done that. So it seems like whatever we do now, I I I guess I would like to see. The, some degree of pressure kept on, um, because we don't know what the. Freed up money would be sent, spent for.
Yeah.
And the more mo- the more money is available, then you tend to have more. Spending on wants, not needs, is my concern, but thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, and if I could just ask those who have spoken to lower their hands unless you have a further comment to make, that would be great. Counselor Oliver then Bowman.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm gonna echo the applause for Glam. Uh, for bringing this forward and and taking us uh, deep in into the numbers. Uh, super helpful, very illuminating. And uh, just a couple of quick questions, if I may, most of the conversation here has kind of answered. Uh, or addressed a lot of where my mind has taken this, or where this has taken me, I should say. Um, uh, the first, uh, Madam Chair, our goal today is a discussion item, right? There is no vote pending, this will likely be held, I assume, or nan?
Um, yes, my intention is to ask for motion to hold, I'll get into that at the end, but. I think there's gonna be a lot of moving parts around this discussion, and we may want the opportunity. To discuss again, so um, so I will ask for a hold.
That makes all the sense. Great, thank you. Um, so then. Mr. Bresky, um, a few minutes ago, there was an analogy used, I think, uh, of a mortgage. And this feels, I mean, granted, there are some similarities here, but I just want to make sure that I have this clear in my mind. To me, this is more like, more equivalent to, the conversation we're having. Is is more equivalent to. Uh, like a 401K that we would be withdrawing from and still contributing to at the same time. Now granted, probably not gonna see that uh, scenario very frequently, but to to me, it's. Look, we know how much money we need to retire on, right? And we need, we now, we also know how much we need to fund. Our pension. So therefore, we need to balance out how much we're putting into it. And how much we're taking out of it at the same time. And all of these tables are basically saying, okay, you have X amount, you 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 are X. Far into that process, right? If we need a billion dollars just to keep the numbers. Um, you know, uh, uh, a kind of even, we're forty some odd percent there. We're withdrawing at a rate, and I believe that's in a different table of. Like, i- if I recall, somewhere in the neighborhood of one, no, maybe nine percent of that comes out every year or something to that effect. Maybe it was between nine and eleven percent. So what we are, we are not jeopardizing, and feel free to correct me if I misstep anywhere through here. But we are not jeopardizing. By making the changes that we're considering here that are talked to in these charts. We're not jeopardizing the ability of pensioners to withdraw the funds uh, that are needed. Is my understanding. What we are doing here is, or what we are contemplating, what we are considering, what if we're. Cause we aren't doing it, I I totally get that point. Um, what the pension board has in front of them is an opportunity to slow down the rate of increase. In how much money we're putting into this fund, which is basically causing, and and we've discussed this quite a bit. You know, when would we be fully funded? That gets pushed out by several years. And at the same time, and I think this is how I'm characterizing, right? This is how I'm characterizing the twenty-four million dollar kind of. Opportunity cost, if you will, of using those dollars today versus investing them. It slows us down based on the accumulated interest we would get over some period of time. Do I have that at least basically right?
Yeah, I think what you're saying is is uh, is basically correct. I've used the um, the 401K analogy myself. Of uh, you know, it it is fiscally prudent that we fund our 401Ks and our IRAs, but. You know, there's, there's, there comes a time, unfortunately, when sometimes you have to prioritize. You know, putting food on the table as opposed to funding your retirement. Um, and it feels kind of, that's the, that's kind of the point we're approaching.
Yeah, and and I do think, and just kind of from a conversational perspective, I've heard you mention. You know. Yes, you 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 could overpay your mortgage, you could put more money into 401K to get to your retirement. Bogey, if I may be so, use that term so crudely, right? You can overpay or overinvest or, you know. Make deposits larger than you need to for s- for some period of time, but when you need that cash today, right? It might make sense to scale back. And what we're actually talking about is, you know, there's an opportunity here because. We had, you know, twenty twenty-two is a rough year for everyone who's opened their 401K statements, we all know that. The opposite is, we have an opportunity, right? To to, you know, the other side of that equation is. By overinvesting. You know, we also have an opportunity to get there much more quickly if we had that option, so it's kind of. In my head, having those two uh, views um, is important here. Um, but I do appreciate all the work here, this is uh, without the explanations uh, from yourself. Uh, and Glam, uh, and I appreciate the outreach there, uh, this would have been much less clear. Uh, so I hope uh. I hope throughout this conversation, at least we're kind of, at least achieving uh, clarity. But I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks everyone again for uh, all of the hard work that went into this. Kudos.
Yeah, and Counselor.
Thank you.
If if I may.
Sorry.
Sorry, um, if I can address one thing he said. So um, you you're correct in the sense that, you know, the, even after our massive decline in asset values this year. You know, there's still something like nine times of value of assets relative to. Uh, the benefit payments that are gonna be paid out. But in addition to that, between our employee and employer contributions. We're gonna put in more money this year than is gonna be paid in benefits.
Right, right, we finally kind of got ahead of that mark, right?
Yeah, so so bridging that gap to full funding comes from two sources. It comes from the fact that we're gonna put in more money. That is paid out in benefits, and then it comes to the fact that. We're assuming our rate of return on those assets is six point nine percent or six point nine five percent. Um, and the growth in the rate of benefits being paid is currently only like. Two point eight percent, two point nine percent. So as long as, I mean, the, you know, as long as the rate of growth of assets is bigger than the rate of growth of the liability. The math is gonna say, fund as much as you can upfront. You know, but in 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 putting it in those cost and savings terms, you know, it's like, well. Jeez, if if we save so much money by doing all this pre-funding, you know, why don't we, why don't we put a hundred million dollars in this year? Instead of fifty or instead of forty, because then we can't run the city, so. That, well, I mean, that's, that's really what we're talking about here.
Right, and I think that the the other way to kind of finish that sentence, and I think I heard you say this yourself the other day. Hey, if we had a hundred million dollars, that'd be a, hey, that'd be a great option. But we don't, that's why we're not here talking about, hey, do we put a hundred million dollars in today, right? We we've got a kind of, well, we have to strike a significantly different balance.
It's a balance, correct.
Alright, thanks again, sir, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. We have one more hand from Counselor Bowman, then I'm hoping we can wrap up, because I personally have a hard stop at nine forty-five. It's nine forty-two.
I will, I'll be quick. Thank you very much. So of course, I appreciate all this great information, and I think. That I felt very comfortable that regardless of this scenario between the three point five percent and. And up to the current one, that the pension is, um, the pension is still very stable. Um, and so I'm not concerned about that. What I am concerned about is. That at the current rate of projected funding, that the program cuts will not just be painful. But likely, um, uh, financially short sighted. Um, you know, we've seen many years of, you know, cuts to things like road maintenance and and building repairs. And the types of things that end up costing us more in the long term. Um, but we also, I think we frequently forget that, you know, we may um, likely incur cuts. Um, to investment that actually makes us money, investing in our, you know, rehabbing our village centers. Um, you know, allows us, you know, opportunities for revenue growth and and major road reconstruction. That's why we do it, not just because we want our city to look prettier, but these are good, every dollar we spend there is money is. You know, uh, increased, you know, five and six times in in revenue growth. Um. I think five years as a, you know, former financial analyst is more than enough time to catch up. We've got up to, if there are bad market returns, we have, do have opportunities to uh. Pull on other items to help get that going. I wondered if we could, in thinking about this scenario, like, sort of like a mortgage, think about it, maybe, um. But, you know, if we could encourage the uh, retirement board to think about something like a minimum funding percentage. Whether it's three and a half percent, which I like because it's, it aligns with our um. Our funding, uh, you know, revenue growth, but then allow additional payments. To be really tied to what the actual growth rate is. So if we have a year where we have a four point two or four point eight percent. Allow to grow four point eight percent, but set the base at the three point five percent. And so that would be, get us somewhere between, uh, you know. Uh, twenty thirty and twenty thirty-five, but actually tie it to the growth rate with it actually being a three point five percent. I think that would be very prudent, it would be sustainable. You know, I find that we talk about making our school budget and other things sustainable based on our revenue growth. I think this, um, you know, is another item that we should think about that. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Uh, really terrific discussion, everyone, and I'm gonna reiterate my thanks to Mr. Bresky. Really well done, and uh, you know how deeply appreciative we all are. Uh, but it it deserves to be said. In terms of next steps, everybody. This afternoon, as I think you all know, is the next meeting of the retirement board. That is at one PM, in person in room two eleven, for anyone who wishes to attend. Uh, we, we don't know what they may or may not discuss and what uh, votes they may or or may not take. The other thing in terms of next steps that I'll mention, we voted at our last council meeting, our last full council meeting. To send two requests, two docket items from the mayor for expenditures of. Uh, free cash to a committee of the whole, uh, and our discussion focused around the idea that. We want to consider the package that the mayor put forward to us in her. Uh, email and letter, which then was in her newsletter, I believe that was dated March twenty-eighth, a sort of a a full. Uh, a full plan, uh, seeing what the outcome of the retirement board's discussion may be today and any other moving parts and docket items. May come between now and then. President Albright and I authored a letter to the mayor explaining. Uh, that we'd sent those items to the committee of the whole and what kinds of information we. Uh, would like to have before us at that meeting, and the mayor has responded to us and asked us to consider further dates out past May first, so. Stay tuned about whether that committee of the whole meeting will be April twenty-sixth or at some other date. Um, and as I said, I I would like a motion to hold this so that we can. Preserve the opportunity to take up this discussion again. Counselor Markowitz, and then hoping we can handle or or take a motion.
Ma- Madam Chair, motion to hold.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any, any discussion on the motion to hold? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, the item is held, and um. We are adjourned at nine forty-seven. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.